All right, let's call some meeting order. Start off with a pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the representative republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our heart. Trustee Huggett Show.
Present.
Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Griner.
Here.
Trustee Schiller.
Here.
President Lysick.
Yes.
Good. Look, Michael. Trustee Goodman.
Here.
Trustee Con. Yeah, Trustee Long.
Here.
Thank you. You want to item two, public comments? If there are any public comments, please stand at the podium, sign in, state your name, keep it around two minutes if you can.
Sure. What the heck is here? Can't you tell me?
I don't.
There's germs, really, I don't. I'm lying. Um, been like two or three years now. Community, I'm sure, is still waiting for paramedic coverage for the members of the community, or something else. Hmm, left my hand. Give me my address.
I think we have.
It's got this S and W's, I's, and numbers, and all the way you get them are difficult.
Any other public comments? If not, we will move along. Fire Department monthly report. Chief.
Okay, we have twenty calls for the month. At our recent meeting, the villages requested our ISO rating on March twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen, at that time, village president, Jamie Sanburri, myself, met with the ISO representatives of the village's ISO rating. They did a complete analysis of the structural fire suppression delivery system provided within our community. The result was a classification rating of fire to the village of Big Ben. We will not be doing our fireworks on the thops this year. As most of you probably heard, we had a major incident on I forty-three Sunday afternoon involving multiple vehicles and patients. We had a great response from our department. We also requested ambulances from Vernon and McQuinivo. Test monitors stood by for us in case we had another call. Seven total patients were looked at, three were transported. The hybris shut down approximately three hours. Um, and all of our DOT and maintenance that we discussed last month is, should be complete now, so.
Yeah, those come through.
Okay.
Excellent.
John, what did that ISO, what is it, like, one to five, one to ten, that rating? Where's it, so I mean, I don't know what five means.
Five, uh, five is pretty good. It's, uh, looking at the scale, five is pretty much, I think, close to nine, if I remember right.
So one to nine is basically?
Yeah, most, it just depends on your wa, where you're located. We're pretty lucky because we have water sources pretty close to us here. Um, so we're on, uh, on the good side of the scale, I guess.
So what would we need to improve to get to like nine?
Put hybrids in, probably.
What we want to go to.
What we want to go, we want to go to the low end of the scale.
Then north shore just get certified at two.
Okay.
Uh, which, which is really high, and so on southwest of here got bumped down to a nine.
Yeah. Yeah, so we want to be, we want to be on the low end, but I don't think there's, we're as far down as we can go right now without probably getting hybrids in.
Okay.
Right.
So.
Thanks.
Excellent, thank you.
All right.
Library report. Eric. Good evening.
I've got my report in there, but I have two things, I have two and one spelling correction to make. So the stats remain unchanged. What I thought was interesting is, they send us a lot of statistics, and they're hard to read through. Now they're not comparing this to twenty-twenty, they're comparing this to twenty-nineteen because there aren't any stats from twenty-twenty, everybody was closed. But we're doing four point three and four point eight percent higher. That's steady volume, that means you could say we're doing little under five percent more work, seeing about five percent more people. And I'm really glad that that's steady because I don't think more is necessarily better. I think what we can sustain is better. And our patrons are back now, our programs are starting to become more popular, people are still very cautious about coming, and we don't have as many fines, which is good because that means we've cut up. We have a lot of outstanding fines. We had a program off-site, we had two girls at a farm on our team, and that was really popular. Fifteen people came, they were in libraries, numbers, or tenders, and I think they're going to go back to the farm, so it started some good relationships. We have an app, you can download on your phone, and our scanner works, so if you have this app, you can come into the library, you can scan your phone now, so you don't have to carry a keychain. And thank you, Attorney Schiller. Um, thank you for looking at all those policies. I had a lot of help, it was a huge project, but they've been updated and are now on their webpages of yesterday. If you want to read them, be my guest. And we're starting our summer programming, that's what we're doing most of May, is planning, doing our advertising, getting our graphics ready. We are getting a school bus from Delsman Transport that's going to show up for story time in two weeks. They approached us, which I thought was pretty cool. They wanted to do some more community outreach, so it's coming with a bus, and the kids are climbing up, and they're going to send wheels on the bus, go round and round, and they have their stories, and I think it'll be a really good day for the kids. Also, this month, our library board is going to sign what are called Waukesha County Standards. That's part two of what we have to do in order to remain a public library. The first part is what you vote on when you approve the county levy, that you will give that money to your library versus sending it away. And the second part are the standards that we have to meet. I'll send you all a complimentary email when we're done with it. The portion that you would be most concerned about would be, we have to meet the standard of having eighty hours a week or two full-time equivalent staff people. And that always becomes a real budget conversation, but we've been doing okay so far. So, let's hope that's safe.
Chief.
Carla, on Wednesday nights, could you tell your library networks not to wait for us to lock the door because we've been finding the front door open, and we hardly ever use it when we're here? So we've just been checking it, and it's been open the last few weeks, so I don't know, she's just waiting for us to blow up that way and lock up or whatever?
I think so, but I'll make sure.
But a lot of times, we don't blow up that way, so.
Okay.
Yeah, just so it can lock.
It's a harder lock. It, yeah, you have to play with the key a little bit. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving along, Police Department monthly report. Chief.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Reports are in front of you. You're going to take these two through and end it while I go through the rest of it. One burglary, three thefts, one vehicle theft, two assaults, there's no say violence, two fraud cases, two drug-related, six drunk drivers, total of seventeen, seven for eleven total arrests, two juvenile arrests, sixty-nine traffic stops, fifty-one citations, three non-traffic citations, two hundred ninety-two calls for service, eighty-one business checks, house checks, two accidents, both hit and runs, and we responded with the fire department, nine of their calls. We'll read through the next couple pages. If you have any questions, you can let me know. There's a couple on there that we'll talk about later, that are very vague and on the sheet, just so you know that, and you see the vague ones. Says the other agencies, three hours and eleven minutes per month of April, fifty-five initial appearances by letter for Big Ben Court, eleven initial appearances by letter for watch truck, delivered watch truck work. See, that collection is, um, at the end there, for the numbers that we collected for the month of April. There's a typo there at the end, sorry about that. We had our spring drug take-back event that was conducted in April, um, on a single day with four point two pounds of medication since we started our program, uh, two months ago, maybe three months ago now, we've taken in twenty pounds of medication, which converts to about seventeen thousand five hundred pills, have diverted from a lot of suppliers from getting in the wrong hands, and we did our first delivery to the, where they get sent to, uh, the day after, or two days after the spring, uh, drug take-back. We continued our Facebook, developing our Facebook, uh, information, we did it for the month of April. Questions? Comments, concerns?
Thank you. E, Presidential Report. Just wanted to give an update that the fireworks will indeed be on July fourth this year at Village Park. Uh, these are the ones with five star, um, they'll go off at sunset like they normally do, so, um, a lot of police will need police and fire presence for public safety issues.
And it's purely just the fireworks, nothing else along with it?
Correct. Uh, E, Public Works Department monthly report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, you know, here, top of my report, uh, April has been a very, very active month of commentary. We had seven barrels we've never had that before. We've also reached the point where we have surpassed two thousand nineteen, and we're only in, in May right now, so it's quite few of them. Um, put some coal patch down up on Woodland, completed our annual brush pickup, we did that in three days. Um, brushes in a parking lot for about a week, and then we had city walks to come in. And grinded, if you look on the back of your thing, you can see a couple pictures of the grinder that comes in, so, comes in in a semi, uh, we take care of us, it's, uh, I think the P V H R is very reasonable for what they do. Were able to load that thing and grind it up in five hours. We sent bid proposal to Wistock about the state lawn that we've been doing for, since two thousand fourteen, and then Laura called me this morning, and advised me that she had just, uh, that we had just rewarded the bids, uh, early this morning. Put thirty yards of wood chips down for the playground in the Village Park. Um, put a new stop sign, a street sign up on Town Line Road, there was no, any street signage up there whatsoever by anyone, three communities, uh, there is no, um, we've done quite a bit of extension work in the ball field, the Village Park, next one will be Cherry Street, that'll be coming next. Um, we scraped off a lot of stuff, and then we brought in, um, two truckloads of infield mix. Also sprayed Village Park, we're doing some other areas of weed killer, we're going to try to get everything done, um, including the village hall there and everything. Um, pressure washed, painted, installed the pier, did some repairs on it. Um, in my eleven years here, the pier models were always mounted in the concrete, and for the first time in that amount of time, the models disappeared. We were a little on the custom structure, and we were able to punch the soap and stuff real quickly, and, uh, we installed the pier and everything. You, uh, the guys seen the notices, we raised and lowered the flags numerous times here. Um, new street signs, a new street sign in the blue and white, and we've been putting up those as we have time. Also compiling a list on the surplus auction, so hopefully look at that on sometime at the end of the, this month, not, it'll be in June. Um, did the first dumpster day, that went very well. Um, if you look on some of your pictures, myself and the chief, um, Kagan, we're working on a way to prevent the carp from ending up everywhere, including our parking lot in our Village Park and other places. There's going to be a significant amount of fish dump, and obviously, as we all know that once they sit in the sun, they have a slight aroma to them, so.
Don't we have cameras that, uh, should identify someone?
I'm glad you brought that up because I'm going to please ask you to do whatever you can. The chief, um, will confer with me, and I know there's some kind of computer issues or something needs to be updated because he cannot see what I see. And if he does, it comes through on the computer, it comes through.
It takes, right now, for some reason, I, Laura, you might know, the uploads, or my two techy guys in here, one will hold it for sure, and uploads feed from my computer, when I watch five seconds of Eric's incidents from down there, it takes like five minutes. So when we were working on that other stuff from earlier in April, uh, watching all the videos, it literally took me eight hours to watch an hour and a half video.
Can you watch it on here, so it's that much faster?
I can, but I can't record it or cut and paste it out to myself from Eric's computer.
We had actually one cell phone in front of me and copying it that way, but, and whatever, whatever we got to do, it makes things work a little bit better.
Conley said he talked to Kelly, I didn't click, not that Kelly, the other Kelly, involved getting some change in with the spectrum thing, I'm not sure why.
Do you, do you have the TBR mobile app?
On my phone?
Yeah.
Um, not on this phone, I just have the phone, so not yet.
Yeah, but have you used that in the past, and that works good with the camera review?
Yeah, that works fine.
And you don't have that vert, that app on the computer?
That app is on the computer, but it's all that, it's all delayed. I mean, literally, five seconds takes five minutes at least.
Yeah.
It's.
I have to call Conley tomorrow anyway, I will bring that up with him too.
So I know, and I know he, he was working on it, they reset everything, and they came down and worked on Eric's computer. Um, and I thought he said something, it had something to do with spectrum when they were making the phone call, but we were looking at some stuff for, um, that happened, where it was potentially happening in the park yesterday, and even today, when I was on it, same thing, or a minute of video trying to watch it is like.
And that's from your, your computer over here, but his, your computer over?
His is fine.
It's fine.
Did you identify the computer?
It's got to be a switch issue, that's not a spectrum issue.
One was at night, one of the incidents was at night, and, and the issue is, even looking through mine, we don't have good quality camera to pick up what we need to pick up. So there are some things that we're working on, but again, with this stuff, it was recently found out that my computer is running at tenth of what it's supposed to release the, the bandwidth or speed, um, so that was adjusted, they came up, put some new stuff on, but, I mean, as we get into summer and things like that, this is something, at least for me and for the chief, I'd like to see it moving a little bit faster. Yeah, absolutely.
The daytime camera works beautiful, the nighttime, we need more light on there, basically what it is. Or you're going to start to bolt up money for better cameras, which obviously we don't want to do, I think the lighting would be more beneficial some than.
Well, we were supposed to be getting upgrades to LED lights for the village for the first third of them, through we energies.
No, that's, you know, well, yes and no, where this is occurring is going to be like right from mine and the fire department, so I think another light there, it would add to that tremendously. I mean, we did get those other two lights working, but it's still kind of a, you know, but, um, for the chief to, you know, spend that kind of time, and to not have things work properly is something that's got to be taken care of.
And I would think that most of your stuff's going to happen at night anyway, or?
We just had some stuff that I talked to him about today that actually happened yesterday. Um, we had an influx of a bunch of people in a short amount of time, and, um, just brought his attention, so that way.
Well, I, I think if we're going to have these, we need to have it so we can actually use it, because to throw carp in there, and there's plenty of people throwing trash in the parks, or there's people letting their dogs poop all over down there, and up on the corner up here, and, you know, we need to take and, we need to have it, I think, so we can actually use these things, or don't even bother to have them.
It's just, computer rate, computer speed right now for him would be great, we'll get some extra lighting in the park, um, but it would be nice that, you know, and we're doing a few other things to, uh, try to take care of some of this.
Well, we've got, and I'm sure John will agree with this too, we've got some pretty expensive equipment in the fire hall and, and in the DPW down there that, so we don't need some, I don't know if your ambulances are here or down there, John?
Okay.
Yeah.
We still got to add some more light to the park, and that's, that's going to get addressed probably next week.
So then they're dumping these because they, there's no garbage down there?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Are they, is there no garbage down there that they can put these into?
Um, if you look on the thing, we have a video, there was carp laying under.
Are they putting, they're putting them in the recycle bin?
No.
Or they're throwing them out?
We have videos of them just taking the fifty-five gallon drum out, dump them right there.
When's the second time it happened?
Well, we found.
Well, the rest of them were on the rocks, by the grass, by the lines, you know, which obviously by the lines, but we didn't get no video because.
Right.
We have cameras, good cameras, but they're not that good, and.
But I mean, do you have?
In fact, the camera system, and, I mean, Joe Cullen, he was still on board, was working with me when we got these cameras, we paid for these cameras ten times over with the one incident that we.
Oh, absolutely.
About the kid that did over a hundred thousand dollars damage to the, to the village. So it doesn't matter, just maybe tweaking them and tweaking the areas where we have them to make more light at night, so we can even get more value out of the camera.
So this, they're just taking, they're in a bin, they're, they've been thrown out, and they're taking and dumping it?
Yeah, we have the video sent to, they just took it right out, dumped it there, we were holding them all, taking pictures, and then they left. And unfortunately, they dumped this right in front of our recycle dumpster, so then you have people, I mean, obviously, we get in at about six-thirty in the morning, we got to scramble and get this stuff out of there because people start coming in and, you know, get this stuff off the parking lot, otherwise you're going to get your car after that, and there's going to be a very pungent odor.
But why are, I guess, why are they dumping them there? Do we need to have the DNR involved?
Carp are a raw fish, which are not regulated, you can shoot as many as you want.
But you can't dispose them like that?
I don't even know what the disposal, uh, protocol is on them. Um, a lot of guys just shoot them and, and leave them in the river, and ospreys, or we do have eagles down here, and they pick them up too, but, um, this is just at a point where it's, um, I don't know, you were with Chuck, there was, what, thirty of them on the other thing, dumped it up?
Yeah, I don't know if it was that many, but there's quite a few.
Because there were some down on the rocks too.
Right, right.
Yeah, so.
So combined, and our guys, my guys and gals are trying to stop down there when they see the boats at night, but, but some of these guys go out there to, but, well, boat hunt these carp, you know, three, four o'clock in the morning, when obviously we don't have anybody.
Yeah, right.
Running around down there at three, four o'clock in the morning.
So, um, Cherry Street, like I said, is going to get a face look. Um, occasion's like, on the twenty-eighth of June, should be all wrapped up. And I will tell you that after inspecting this unit, this place for a number of years, I'm probably one of the happiest guys around, so I don't have to go up there anymore. Um, but, um, we had a pre-con, we met with them, and hopefully everything's done, um, so I will, tomorrow, Will's going to do a check on that, and I've got one more to repair early in the morning, but he'll get back to me on that. Um, hopefully, we're on the short road to having this thing finished off. One other thing, celebrations, purchased, um, three maple trees for people on our committee that have, uh, parent died. One of those is, uh, Bobby right here, our former clerk, so we're going to be installing three trees within a park here, uh, we'll get that off the ground next week. That's all I have, any questions? Do you want to, or do you want me to get ahold of Blaine, the warden from the DNR, and ask him about the car situation?
I can, I can call tomorrow.
Right. Uh, maybe, you know, if it is not kosher with them, maybe he can pop down here once he's.
He's on disability right now, he broke his hand, so.
Awesome.
You know, there's only so many orders per county, so it's pretty short.
All right.
Anything else?
Thank you, sir.
Do all the mothers in here, happy mothers?
Professional Services have a report?
Nothing tonight.
Beautiful. Move on to item four, consideration approval of minutes from April first and April fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, Village Board meetings.
My question is, the price of the readings for both.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries?
People first under reports, D should be nothing, under the President's reports, doesn't have any. Same thing on F, that same section, for Professional Services.
Inside of four there with the motion, or I move to approve the minutes of protections, there's a second, it says to end, should be a D at the end of that? Second. That's on the protection.
I believe under number five, approval of bills, um, that states the amount of approval after, uh, uh, Trustee Goodman made a motion to approve, but doesn't actually have a dollar or not above that.
Yeah, we've been taking miss on that, sometimes they put it in, sometimes it's just in that motion. Same way on the April fourteenth, now?
Motion to approve the.
I'll make the motion to approve. I'll make the motion to approve the minutes for April fourteenth as well.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? I didn't see anything on the April fourteenth.
I didn't either. I'll make the motion to approve the minutes for April fourteenth as well.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes approved. Item five, approval of bills, discussion consideration and approval of bills from May sixth, twenty twenty-one, in the amount of one hundred thirteen thousand seven hundred and nine dollars and sixty-three cents.
I'll make the motion to approve. The bills in that amount? I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Item six, old business, A, discussion consideration and possible action on the emergency management plan for the Village of Big Ben. Paulie, Michelle?
I'm, you're ready yet.
So, uh, I'm on page two hundred and thirty-seven right now, I'm getting towards the end of it, uh, should be ready here in the next couple of weeks. I'll submit that to Michelle for publication to the Public Safety Commission for Comments, we'll take a look at that, next month's near, and potentially have a preliminary review by the board definitely after that, or maybe the following month, depending on the way that corrections.
Perfect.
All right.
Thank you. Any questions? Move on to new business. Item A, discussion consideration and possible approval of the museum.
Item A, discussion consideration and possible approval of the museum's open record letter. Sadie also has photos she wants to share with the board. So in your packet you have a letter or a form that was drafted up that I will let everybody look at here, I've got a couple of requests on this form. Bring up for discussion. I would like to see the terms library and librarian replaced with clerk and clerk's office. Um, because the museum does not report to the library anymore, they report to the village board. The library's pretty thinly staffed and the library board recommended this cause. But with those changes, everything I think looks acceptable, you, Terry has reviewed it and gave it his blessing. Here.
The natural, the word document. In a loose, the electronic pattern.
Do you have the original word documented this?
The electronic version, no, no, the electronic.
The computer version, who typed it up?
I typed it up.
Okay.
And I sent it to John.
Yeah, but your original, this is in your computer, correct?
It's in my computer.
Right. Could you forward a copy of the original to the clerk, please?
Oh, sure, I can do that.
And then they'll just change out those words for you.
Okay, oh, okay, sure.
And I think it'll be done if the board approves of it.
What, item number four, this, it says museum two?
Item number four, museum is, no, that's, museum's fine, I wanna remove the library and librarian and replace it with clerk and clerk's office. But otherwise everything would look great on there.
Who's making the copies?
Um, who's it say?
Museum staff, one of them.
Says money's collected for printing her name with the library.
No, it'll be changed to clerk.
Yeah, by a great piece of work.
Or clerk's office. Cause they're gonna be using the copier up here. And the only thing that was asked was that we remove all the binders from the library?
I think we need to address some of this, these issues.
Sure.
The, the only problem with changing it to the clerk's and clerk's office, the reason we put it in the library to begin with was people will come in
In the evening.
Saturday mornings or in the evenings and the clerk's office is closed.
Now, we did discuss it with Carla and she has no problem with it.
So we had basically done it that way, not to slight the board or anything.
No, I understand.
Just so that people had more access to the materials.
Copier is open here. And I think all of the village staff has a key to the door to get into boardroom.
Yeah, we all have.
So any, anybody who has a key to get in the front door can get in this door coming into the boardroom. Which get, get, grants you access to the copier and the copy room and the boardroom.
Oh, so you prefer the copies be made by the clerk's office? Or...
By the, by the clerk's copier, yeah.
Okay. Well, that we don't have an issue with then, if the, if the public can get there, it's just that you know, if they come, somebody comes in after work or on Saturday mornings to research something.
Sure.
Clerk's office is closed.
Someone will have to let them in, one of the librarians or another staff member. But they have to obviously fill the form out ahead of time anyway, so there will be notice.
Are you giving a lot of requests for this?
Not.
No, we haven't had a lot.
I just received a couple. Um, one for a farm, I'm looking up some information on farm, on artesian. And just one last night, and he was gonna get back to me and he has not yet. Uh, something about the inter-urban and I do have pictures and photographs. But that was only, and then that would be something Bobby and I would obtain and leave again now with the villa, uh, the libraries and not with the clerks. Because if we put together some articles, we would put them in a binder of some kind for the person to pick them up now, are you saying we shouldn't do that?
Or, you know, the library board's stance on it was, you know, and the board, is we wanna make that totally separating between the museum and the library because we moved everything a year's to the clerks. And, um, I, I don't think it'd be a real big issue if they had come to the clerk.
Well, we're just in, um, Jeff, if something, if this person that she's talking about right now, if he comes in at say six o'clock at night on his way open work to pick it up, clerk's gone, so he has to go to the library to be let in here. So are we gonna leave the, is the clerk gonna leave the information in this room?
That, or do we set a time that, like, they make an appointment?
Right, that's right.
To come in?
Just gonna say, these people aren't just stopping by out of the blue to pick something up, you've already dealt with them
Yes, and all they're gonna do is walk in and say, there's a package for me.
If there's a package for them and you have to leave it in the library, I'm sure the librarians are gonna refuse handing a package over, we just don't want someone from the public standing in the library making copies for hours on end.
Oh, no.
That type of...
Well, that's not allowed, yeah, that is not allowed.
Right.
Yeah.
No, we, we can work with whatever you need to do for drop-offs, pickups, whatever, that's not an issue.
Okay, we just wanna make sure that the public can get their information they're asking for.
Right, I mean, we prefer them to deal with the clerk's office, but obviously if that's closed and the library's the only thing open.
Okay.
Maybe the police will hand deliver them all.
You're gonna make the, you're gonna make the copies, cause they won't get the originals, right?
If, if the person I'm particularly dealing with and I say, oh yes, I have this and this, I will make copies for you and you can pick them up.
Yeah.
And store it.
Yeah, so, and then they'll pay for the, for the, on the open record you have to pay for the copies.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So then we need to work out some, we prefer it to go through the clerk.
Okay.
If, if something happens where, where we can't, then there'll be a bill with it in the library and they'll have to collect that. Do you have a problem with that? And this should only be on a rare occasion.
Yeah.
Otherwise have to come in.
We do that with mail and packages and everybody helps everybody, no problem.
But here, I come in during the day, which I can, and say to the clerk, could you run off a few copies for me?
Sure.
That's no problem.
Right.
That's just not a problem.
Right.
Are you leaving originals for these people to view at times, it's always a copy?
Unless I specifically say I do have the originals and, but there really is no need for that.
The only, the only time there would be a need for something like that is if there's a large volume of information and they might need to look through that and say, oh, I, I really would like a copy of this and a copy of that page and
And is that where then one of you two would sit down with us individually?
Well, we'll have to if it's, you know, if it's, see, that's why we had them in the library then. The information was to stay in the library, they weren't to take it out. If they wanted copies of certain pages, then the librarians would make copy of whatever they asked for. You know, paid for the, the copies to the librarian and then they could take the copies. But the original information was to stay there and then, you know, we would pick it up when they were through with it and put it back, down in the li, um, the museum.
Now, years ago, there was, and I think Carla can attest to some of this. There was a problem, if you gave someone original copies of something and left it with them and you're not watching, those copies disappeared, they were torn out of the book.
Yeah, we don't want that.
No, right.
And some of them...
That's why I was asking if someone's gonna sit with them or are these
Mm-hmm.
copies then, you know, that they're made and they can't pick them up during business hours that are posted, if they're distributed by the library.
Well, we'd have to sit with them if that's the case, that, you know, that they would be in here. That, you know, if they were in the library, there's a librarian there, you know, there's someone there with them, we don't want them to just have this stuff and go through it themselves.
Library hours too, so it wouldn't be so hard for them to work at clerk hours. And we don't wanna put any extra work on you guys either, cause you put in enough volume to hour down there. We just, we just wanted to go through the clerk.
Okay.
But we wanna make it simple for you two.
At the end of the day, you guys are handling it all with whoever's doing the requests.
Yeah.
That's it.
And you're setting the appointments and the times and all you're doing is letting the clerk know, hey, I need copies of this or there's a package to go out. You got it all handled.
I, I would like to share something funny with this board. The lady that I'm trying to locate from called me on the phone, I've talked to her a couple of times. And she says, I was to your post office. I was to the Village of Vernon, they couldn't help me in the post office, the library couldn't help me. Uh, and I got your name, but going around this village was like going back in time, it was like Mayberry. And she thinks it's just her words adorable. So I thought, okay, we'll take that, it's adorable. But again, I don't know if you have any questions. The photographs are items that the fire department Chief Luddy, Paul Spickel and Jimmy Sonnenberg came down and hauled all those bins that we were not able to get at. What you saw are some of the things they went through for us. Um, sorted, this you keep, this we saved, this was put back on the shelf. Multiple items. You, you just don't need that, you, we have one room. Fifteen pairs of dirty gloves, okay, they were fireman's gloves. We keep a pair, two, this is what they used and fifteen, we just found more. We just come across and we counted twenty-seven t-shirts. Various sizes, various colors. Some we built because of Big Ben, Vernon and Fire Department.
They're all identical, it's not like seventeen different colors.
No, they were just different colors.
We don't need that. And Bobby and I invited, and she came a week or so ago?
Yeah.
We invited, uh, Bonnie Bird, the executive director of the Waukesha County Historical Museum to come down, to go through the museum with us, to give us some pointers, what are we doing right? What can you, uh, what can she, more? I'm trying to think of her words and they're not, what she want, what we wanted from her, how can we do this better? How can we improve on what we've done? And she spent a good hour and a half or so with us and gave us pointers. Now, that, what you just got that I put together and that was approved by Ms. Over, is just step one.
Yeah.
Where are many, many steps we have to go through. We have to put together a mission statement, there's all kinds of stuff that we have to do. And again, we told us, we are the Village of Big Ben and the Village of Vernon and the story. That who, that's who we try to keep the history about, we understand you go beyond it. You know, there are certain historical things you do keep, but we have to keep that in mind. And that's what we've been trying to do. And, um, she, um, on labeling, she told us what we're doing is very good, how we can improve on. And we don't have a computer down there, we don't have a printer, everything comes to my house. It makes it kind of difficult at times, Bobby does not have a printer. So, I know we spoke of this, of this, if we at some point just get something set up in some way, make it a little easier for what we do. Um, it, it would be a big help, it would really be a big help. And, um, I am going to quote what she said to us on leaving, because we are very proud of her, are we not? What she said to Bobby, you know, and her words. Bonnie Bird paid us the ultimate compliment. You are doing an exceptional job and we took that to heart.
So, awesome.
Um, we appreciate that. Another thing we would like, we really would like a mat for the floor. When it's cold, it's cold, just standing on it, we would like something in front of that table that we work on, that would be nice. And, um, the display, that's probably gonna stay up till July or August. That took a lot of work and I think it's something that should stay up for a while.
Sure.
Carla says there's been quite a
Beautiful.
A few compliments on it, so we'll keep that up and, um...
It's very nice, you know, can I make a suggestion? Your budget meeting is gonna come up here, uh, and we just set it to where, you know, have your requests in, so get your your budgets from, uh, the clerk and then take it and start going through and put together what you think you want as far as you know, a computer, what it's gonna be, what your, what the printer, the mat, things like this. So kind of put some thought into that, so when you set down with the finance committee, you have your thoughts together for next year as far as what you want. And we'd like to have those all in by July first. But don't, don't just put a bunch of numbers down, put down what you're requesting, what you're requesting for, okay? And if you need more help, please, you know, are you on the, uh, village website at all as far as
The museum?
The museum?
I don't think it's on there yet.
I don't think we have anything on there.
Put a few things on there or, you know, get all that, Kelly, are you doing that?
I can, yep.
Yeah, I got a quote.
You know, if you need more help, put that on there or whatever, cause you are doing a very good job.
We appreciate that.
I have, I have a quote from the phone company to put a phone in down there. Um, just waiting for budget cycles to come up and run it through so that they have a phone, cause you can't, cell phone services next to nothing inside that building.
Before I forget, Ms. Bird was very impressed with the church windows, very much, she knows the history of the Baptist Church. And now it's up to us to be as we're in charge. She would love it if we would donate one of the windows to their historical society. And where she is going to be available to us anytime, I think what a nice gesture from us, the village to them, to give them one of our windows. I would not give one of the windows like that say Clark Street or any of things that we're familiar with. But I think it would be a very nice gesture for us to donate to them a window. We have seven. And we really, that's a lot.
We can't display them all at once.
No.
Right, and that's totally your call, you pick one out and find it and just let us know what your intent is. Your department.
Yes, our department, thank you. I think that's it.
Outstanding, nice work.
Thank you.
We're, we're looking forward to seeing your expanded budget for this year.
Well, three hundred dollars does not...
I, I understand, it's gonna, it's gonna be very
I'm sorry.
It's gonna be very hefty this year with what we can do.
It just, it doesn't, it doesn't. Uh, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I need a motion from the board or not on the it's not an open records request letter, it's a letter of, what do we call it officially? Request for information form with the proposed changes possibly.
So we're just changing the
Anywhere it says library to clerk's office and anywhere it says librarian to clerk.
I have a motion to approve the form as change.
One second, bud.
Any further discussion?
Is that our normal price, twenty-five cents per page?
Yeah, for public, yes.
For you, we charge five dollars per page.
Right. Trustee should pay more.
Down here at the bottom, it says, you know, money's collected for printing remaining with, with the libraries. So we're gonna change it to
Everywhere it says library will change to clerk's office and everywhere it says librarian will change to clerk.
Do we, do we maybe wanna
Or clerk treasurer.
And somewhere in the museum budget though, where that money would go?
No, doesn't make sense. We'll get a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven B, discussion, consideration, and possible approval of the service, service agreement from Alsko. This is just for our rugs. And sanitizer.
And what does these rugs be down?
So it looks like theirs.
Four rugs?
Um, I just tried to look at Eric. I'm gonna ask Eric to get Shady and Bobby and Anti-Fatigue Matt to put underneath their work area down there. Maybe three by six or whatever. You know where we get the best prices.
And it's the, instead of going through Alsko, just buy them.
Right.
You know, don't do the rental thing like this for that.
Don't we uh, just use this in the winter time? We use it all year. I thought we cut that back during the
I thought we did too. I thought we, that's no rug service.
We tried and they wouldn't let us.
Oh.
Typically do the contracts, usually five years with these guys, I guess. Also air mark, feel they're all pretty consistent in that area.
Right.
So yeah, I mean ultimately if you've signed down a contract for five years and you have an inventory, you know, a commitment of eight rugs, you're not gonna say, hey, we'll let you do it six months of the year. It's, the contract's the contract. After it expires, you can renegotiate that, but I've had zero, zero renegotiating with these guys under the contracts.
Does the attorney have a chance to review this contract at all? It's got a lot of fine print on it.
Is prices compared with the previous contract?
Um, we just pay the bills on it.
I think they went up a little bit from
Have you lost the competition on this to see if there's a question?
Except air mark and Alsko are kind of the main two in this ballpark. And this is a new five-year contract, so that means we're coming up on, end of one for the prior one.
Right. Cause we don't leave the rugs during the corner.
So it could be something to have that conversation, you know? Now's the time. I mean, since it's under a renewal.
I think we should look into it, yeah.
We have to give written notice of termination at least twenty-eight days in advance.
Sure, but when does the prior contract end? If this is a new five-year, that tells me it's coming up soon.
I've got a date on here, three fifteen of all aids.
What'd you say?
I don't know what that means.
Oh, you can write it on there?
Is it handwritten? Is that the original contract date or?
Yeah, that's what we have to look into is understanding exactly where we are underneath the contract right now. They said sixty months is their standard.
Hey, there's no expiration date on this agreement.
Yeah, the uh, that's the new one he just gave me.
Yeah, I think so.
If the old one is like the new one, uh, after the five years, it means one month. And so you have twenty years.
Cause everybody can look at, do we need all of these rugs? Wouldn't we be burnt off just purchasing a rug?
Well, who's gonna take care of cleaning the rugs then?
Yeah, so that's, that's the key, that's the key with these services. Do we use them? And you know, the nice thing is that every week they come, they swap them all. You know, and then you, there's, there's some padding on the pricing so that if a rug is damaged, you're not liable. They'll just swap the rug, even if there's somebody cut it or whatever it may be. That's what that's for is there's that insurance piece of it that allows them to replace the rug and see what costs.
We do have rugs that may work and we paid like two hundred and twenty dollars a rug for really nice thick absorbent rugs.
Sure.
And they last a few years before they're just trash from Wisconsin winters. I mean, the salt in the water just kills them. Um, they look like garbage and you gotta replace them for ten dollars a night. Eight dollars a month.
So this, this thing's hard to read because the total inventory on these things are two per, right? There's two three by five, actually four three by fives, two of them are in the library.
Yeah.
There's two four by sixes and two three by tens, but then underneath the inventory min, there's a quantity of one. So it's hard to read whether or not you guys, this is actually for four or fits for eight?
Well, we have, yeah, there's one on the premise and then there's one in the laundry.
Is this fair?
I think. And they're rotating them out every week.
Yeah.
And those are our rugs.
I think it's every other week.
Well, yeah. I, I think we would be foolish to buy rugs and try and launder them ourselves. No, I mean, these things get heavy when they're wet. They look like garbage.
I would assume that this frequency EOWA is every other week.
Yep.
So yeah, that would make sense that you'd have one on the floor and one in reserve at any given time, so. I guess we would pay for both of those, so like the three by five matte browns that are listed first, you got to a lot of inventory of two. So it'd be eighteen dollars and sixteen cents for two of those that you're paying, I'm, I'm assuming.
Yeah, so we're looking at roughly nine, let's say ninety-two dollars.
A month.
Yeah, if you add all those up. Which seems kind of crazy to be honest.
That's what I
Based on my experience.
Three, two, three, four, five.
Each of us.
Well.
Two of each.
Five every, five every two weeks.
Yeah.
And the other thing, the mess against sanitizer, you know, how often?
Yeah, that's always the rules. Those are always the rules.
We're not using it yet. It's just the rugs.
So we're building ninety-two dollars every two weeks? That's the consensus here?
I thought it was fifty-six dollars every two weeks.
That's what I thought.
Was the bill inherited?
There wasn't? I couldn't swear I saw one.
I proved it.
Yeah.
Did you put one in there?
Yeah. Anyways, I think we should have this contract updated, need an expiration date. Contact name, make sure you change to the clerk.
You have some gales coming?
Yeah, fifty-four, fifty-eight thirty-four we pay bi-weekly right now.
So that tells me the ninety-two dollars is probably the monthly rate. And bi-weekly you're paying half of that, so you know, the forty-six or whatever.
Yeah.
Plus the fees or something. You know, probably fees, fees in it. Yeah. Cause there's always some fees in there.
It's like fifteen hundred dollars a year on rugs.
Yeah, that's on the old contract too, Kelly. So it must may actually have a little bit of price increase into it.
Yeah.
And I noticed that
Does that get break up?
Uh, that was just a summary.
And if we set, if we set the last contract in oh eight, basically it went for five years and then every anniversary get done, I'm sorry. Every uh, any month thereafter, it has a guaranteed price increase of at least five percent.
Inflation, yeah.
So, you know, that builds it up significantly without any checks and balances for a number of years.
Same as you can buy, you, you can buy a lot of fifteen rugs for a dollar an hour.
Who do you come from? You just came straight to the clerk from probably Alsko where?
I'm presuming that, right. I couldn't find it today. They wanted emailing it to me, but I know she was dealing with him. I think um
I mean, these prices could jump twenty percent by the end of the contract.
Yeah.
According to the Either way, I don't think we're ready. I don't think we're ready to approve this. We need some competitive votes and
You know, those two, two diligence. There are concerns when the price adjustment is up to five percent per year.
Yeah, we need to shop around. Just by looking at my
And see if there's options.
Well, without, we need some aggressiveness because these prices are crazy.
Cause that, in the summer time, we don't need the rugs exchanged as often. Cause we can vacuum them.
Right.
For example, the three by tens, I'm paying half of what they're charging on here. So, yeah, let's table this.
Just move, Carla?
Um, just to let you know, the black rugs, there's one down that hallway near the library. We got those when the vandalism happened from the insurance company. They don't have anything to do with it and they've never been cleaned, just vacuumed. Uh, that was at least a year ago.
And holding up pretty well?
That's what, I mean, I find after once kind of recall, an hour it's for.
Yeah, I know you can get them cheap at one hours or
And they hold up very well when you just replace them.
Even if you're swapping them more frequently, when you have, like you said, when you run the numbers and you're dropping ninety-seven dollars or a hundred dollars a month, you might have quite a few rugs for that, especially when we're only using them part-time. So it might be something to discuss. Agreed. I don't, I don't think we want to launder them, believe me, but to vacuum them every once in a while, I'm gonna
Right. But my only worry is winter time.
Yeah.
You know, the, the one coming right in the front door with that.
Yeah, that one's got messy.
It's gonna be sloppy and messy.
Well, that's where too, we can see, can we just get service for part of the year kind of versus all year?
Agreed.
Kelly, can you jump on that?
So Kelly, do you have a motion to table?
I didn't have suggestions on the topics.
Yeah, I'll get you some, sure. Warren, I want a suggestion.
Yes, sir.
Um, we were asking about wash and all, the winter. We do have a pressure washer that uh, self-disaster had almost three hundred brews. Um, we could make something work, could hang those rugs up down with a DPW and give them a wash, let them dry and rotate them. And I'm not looking for more work.
I'm just saying careful with your offer, buddy.
That, that would be duly noted then too as part of an option, but I don't, I don't wanna pile anymore on your platter.
We could like open that to the public to bring their rugs for pressure washing. You could make some money on that.
All right, we got a motion to table. Do we have a second?
Yes, I can.
Do you have a second, Edith?
We have some discussion.
Discussion's over. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Table. Uh, item seven C, discussion, consideration, and possible approval of a truck for public works. As their police and financing personnel, truck has been sold.
I thought we were gonna go with the police truck in a few years and
Not a pickup truck, a sort of road truck for plowing itself.
Oh.
Because of the repair costs on the existing one, it's getting long and gooey for the certain, it costs us a lot of money every year to keep it on the road.
So was it sold for?
Huh?
It was sold?
Yeah, um, a hundred and fifty-five thousand, I believe, was what the asking price was on it. It was a twenty-twenty demo. Had virtually no miles, came fully equipped with plow box, solder, everything. It was essentially half price and I'm sure it went the day after Eric sent us the email. I mean
It was, it was a good deal.
Yeah, I couldn't believe it.
But what we said in finances, you know, deals like this are gonna come up and go quick. So if we're gonna replace this, you know, we need to take and do something here to authorize Eric to sort of look for that piece of equipment. It's, it's an old piece of equipment, you know, six or something. And it's got a horrible dump box on it. And it's got some other issues. It's been having for a while. And if we could get it for like what we're doing with the uh, the loader, you know, where we have a lease and then buy out, it would be something you could afford with, we're done. So I guess are we just looking for a authorization for Eric to look for a unit?
Do we need this because we can't use the loader to do this?
You can't salt with the loader.
Can't, can't salt.
Plus you need a, a bigger truck to haul stuff if he's gotta pick up infield mix or gravel or
Trash was horrible.
Yeah, I mean, we need, we need a dump truck.
Is there, is there anything budgeted for this year as far as payment or something like that?
You could get it into the budget coming up.
For coming, yeah.
Right.
That's what I'm hinting at. I mean, if there was an allotment of some funds that were available on the budget, sure, then that's his marching orders to use those funds to do so. But if there isn't for this year, then that's part of the planning for next.
Right.
Put some kind of, figure out a budgetary number. What do you think this is gonna cost? And put that lump sum in there for that monthly lease payment that it would be, you know, kind of try to ballpark it.
And there are, there are, you know, there are places we need to use a dump truck. We don't use the loader in every street. You know, uh, right now, like Warren said, it's, it's our own assaulting unit. And uh, you know, some, sometime we gotta replace this thing anyway. So, and if you have the loader go down for a particular reason or the dump truck go down, you know, you need something to, maybe use one or the other to get streets running.
Well, one of the attractive things was this unit was available now. It was at a really good price. Um, if you do an order out unit now, you will not get one until December of twenty twenty-two. So keep that in mind.
We're gonna trust you're gonna come across another screaming dealer. I hope. Um, yeah, I don't know that we need any action here. We had it on there in case it was still available, but it was not. Um, yeah, Eric's gonna keep looking for something in the meantime and we're gonna budget accordingly. Item seven D, discussion, consideration, and possible approval of committee appointments. You have your committee appointments in your packet and changes or new committee appointments are proposed to be public works commissioned. Here resident Rain Blawa and resident Larry Obrensky. Uh, we still have one opening on public safety. Uh, we have one opening on board of appeals. We have one opening on board of review. We have
Who's not on board of appeals?
Uh, Steve Rancin. I just pumped out tonight that he's gone. We have enough for quorums on all of these. Um, and then on the cemetery board, we have uh, plot owner Christine Young. Uh, resident Nancy Dean coming on for the two top open spots and then the one here at the bottom is blank. I had someone lined up, but he hasn't committed yet and he's also a plot owner. Um, I added in our shared services committee just so it's on the record. Consists of trustee Howdy Show, trustee Goodman and myself and any department heads or staff as requested per meeting.
And that's, remember like last month we were talking related to fire personnel? So that's the catch-all, the catch
Right, right.
As well as anybody who may need at any time.
Right, yeah. If I need chief to come in or
Good.
Whatever. That way we can just have anybody attend when they need to.
Makes sense.
Do we wanna change some of these, like some are one year, some are three year?
I don't know if we can.
One term.
I think these terms, these terms are set by ordinance.
Are you?
Yeah. The only one that's not is uh, shared services. The rest of these are all set by ordinance.
They tend to be stay your term, at least in some.
Fox River terms are gonna have to be changed. Does that expire?
Oh, sorry, missed that. Fox River, Mike and Larry.
Those are me, those are twenty twenty-one, twenty-three.
Twenty-one to twenty-three. Thanks for catching that. Oh. You can't stagger them. It's a one-year term.
It shouldn't be. But now look.
Oh.
They're supposed, they're supposed to expire at different times.
Different times throughout the year? I, board review. I trust you on that. I mean, that's your wheelhouse.
So that they're not full turnover potentially reiterated, that makes some sense.
Are you looking it up?
Yeah, I'll look it up.
I just went off a little, it's always there.
What?
And I did put all of the chairs of each committee or commission bold. Um, I will get Laura and Kelly the contact information for any new appointees, should you approve them.
Mike Bennett is the chair for the board of appeals.
Now, why didn't that bolt? It was bolted on my computer.
Sure it was.
It was. And if anybody knows of anybody willing to serve on a committee or commission, send them my way. We have a few openings. Do any of you trustees wanna serve on a different committee or commission or an extra one?
I mean, that's some brave words there.
Well, I'm not, I'm not letting you get out of any of them.
Well, for that, that's a different story.
Or is everybody pretty happy with the status quo?
You can always have my seat. Kelly, funniest?
No, busy now.
Or do you want more?
Nope. It's not that funny.
Kelly, funniest?
I don't think so.
What?
Are we just waiting on that?
Yeah, I'm just waiting to see what he says on board review.
Yeah, the, the states, uh, the, the, doesn't.
Doesn't dictate that.
Well, that's, that's like, it's just a summary, so I think it's just.
No. Maybe, can we look up and see what the dates were previously?
They were one year.
They've been one year.
Yeah.
I think that either, I either saw the ordinance or it's gonna be.
Hold on, the board.
But this, can we search that?
We can update that after this, right?
Yeah.
If it needs to be.
All it says under membership, board review, membership, village, board review members, president, village clerk, other members by ordinance. So I could see, why, we, we probably, you think maybe you saw it under our village?
I thought it was under the ordinance, so it might be.
Oh, I'm a joke. I should be able to get that pretty quick.
Typically, there's staggered terms though.
Just make sure it's on TV.
Can you turn?
There, you're well, George.
Review one point one five. Okay, but the board review shall consist of three citizen members appointed by the village president, confirmed by the village board, citizen member shall serve a term of one year commencing September first, and members of the board of review shall receive such compensation as determined by the village board. So we. Yeah. I'm trying to remember though, have we changed the date of, or maybe that's what we changed to September first?
Maybe in September, yeah.
I'm not sure.
From September to April?
Yeah, cause they moved, they moved the order of review, I think, from, I don't know, by a couple months like that.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of like, your board review is meeting on next week, and if you don't have any appointments, it makes it hard. So it's maybe actually the date of the term is, is maybe wrong.
Yeah, maybe that's why we went to September first.
Maybe that's why it's on, yeah.
So we need to change that to a one-year term?
No, it is.
It is a one-year term. It's just the date April, April maybe wrong.
Oh.
So we change that to September?
Yeah, it should be September one, I think that, that much.
Might have been, okay.
Yeah, that's a good point. That, that would be consistent then, that, uh.
And would it be one year? So if you put someone in there next month, is it one year from the time that they start?
I don't think these people still continue on their thing until September, then we reapply.
Yeah, so.
As you.
Right, so whether you try to appoint now or you wait till August.
So their term is September twenty-twenty to September twenty-one.
Wouldn't it be easier just to keep everybody on the same schedule or?
Yeah.
It doesn't refer board because they meet in May?
Board review has to be, i- if you got a new member, they have to go through training. And you won't make it through training.
Yeah, it's the one exception that I'm aware of. I, I think everything else could follow me along.
Okay, so we'll switch that to September. And I realize I may have forgotten one other one on here, which was already appointed, our weed commissioner.
And I'm honored.
So, settle in, Russell.
Resident master guard.
Uh, I just had that up. Let me, yeah, I think that's a one-year. It's a lifetime appointment.
You shut up.
Eh, doesn't have a term. Lifetime appointment, or until you decide to tell us to go away.
Pretty good, though.
So, there you have it.
I'll make the motion to accept the new committee members and, and the other changes we made to.
I'll say no. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You have the changes written.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You have the master key, so I, I can fix that.
Yeah, can you email it up and it'll work when you're done?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item seven E, discussion, consideration, and possible approval of the following operator license applications. Uh, I'm gonna, these kind of in batches here. Uh, sub one, celebrations committee, rumble by the river, Stephen J. Visaki, Carrie A. Visaki, Elena L. Ford. Chief? Thumbs up. Go.
It was approved by Paul Zeke.
Um, so two Kelly's bleachers, Tracy L. Kinsky.
Approved by public safety.
Uh, item, so three, Blue Heron Restaurant or Supper Club, uh, one, Donald J. Walsh, Jr., two, Shannon L. Walsh. Three, Brenda A. Walsh, four, Thomas H. Peterson, five, Warren J. Wink, six, Alex, Alex J. Tomit.
I'll approve.
Very good.
I make the motion that we approve the above-listed operator license applications.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Approved. Item F, discussion, consideration, and possible approval of the following class A combination beer and liquor off-premise applicants. Sub one, Brad W. Janney, new agent, thirty-two twenty-five Douglas Avenue, East Troy, Waukesha, doing biz.
Business head.
Business head.
Oh, Waukesha doing business, that's Quick Trip. I just got confused with the East Troy and Waukesha. Uh, West two thirty-five, South seventy-one, twenty-five Big Ben Drive. Chief?
Uh, that's a new agent, new manager, Quick Trip, uh, approved by the public safety.
Okay, thank you. Sub two, Mark Anderson, seventy-three ninety-two Tifton Drive Franklin, doing business as Catering Specialties. West two three zero, South eight eight five five Clark Street.
Reno approved by public safety.
So three, Patel Alkesh, eight ninety-eight oh four seventieth Street, Kenosha, doing business as Big Ben Food and Beverage. South ninety-one, West two two nine five oh Milwaukee Avenue. Chief?
Approved by public safety.
Thank you.
I make the motion to approve the above three agents or the above three class A combination beer and liquor off-premise applicants.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, discussion, consideration, and possible approval of the following class A beer off-premise license applications. Sub one, Brian Gottfried, seventy-three twelve Townline Road, Waterford, doing business as Jerome's Corner Market, West two three zero, South eight seven one five Clark Street. Chief?
Approved by public safety, Reno.
I make the motion to approve the above your off-premise license applicant.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item H, discussion, consideration, and possible approval of the following class B combination beer and liquor on-premise licenses. Licenses applicants? Sub one, Richard Petrie, South ninety-two, West two three oh five oh Milwaukee Avenue, doing business as Richie's DS Bar. South ninety-two, West two two nine, two two nine two zero Milwaukee Avenue. Chief?
Uh, Reno approved by public safety.
Uh, sub two, Donald Walsh, West two two nine, South eight three zero zero Big Ben Road, doing business as Blue Heron. West two two nine, South eighty-three hundred Big Ben Road. Chief?
Approved by public safety, Reno.
Sub three, Ralph Yanis, West two one two, South seven four two four, Anis Way Musquego, doing business as Papa Stash Pub and Eatery. West two two eight, South ninety-three hundred Big Ben Drive. Chief?
Uh, table by public safety till next one.
Uh, sub four, Kelly Vasitas, seventy-eight oh five, South Loomis Road, Wind Lake, doing business as Kelly's Bleachers, Big Ben. West two two, two three three, South seven two six oh Vernon Lane. Chief?
Reno approved by public safety.
Very good, thank you.
I make the motion to approve the class B combination beer and liquor on-premise license for applicants Richard Petrie, Donald Walsh, and Kelly Vasitas.
Second my motion.
Any further discussion?
Um, public safety has requested that Ralph Yanis appears before the public safety committee with the next meeting due to pending litigation. And I encourage you to read through your please reports from this moment.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item I, discussion, consideration, and possible approval of the following class B beer on-premise license and class C wine on-premise license applicants. Uh, I'm just gonna go with Kristen. Uh, three three two oh one, South Honey Lake Road Burlington, doing business as Saint Joseph's Congregation. South eighty-nine, West two two six five oh Milwaukee Avenue. For the record, Kristen's last name is spelled S.C.H.K.E.R.Y.A.N.T.Z.
Scaryous.
Scaryous.
Ah, very well, thank you.
You're not scary, huh?
I do not. Chief?
Approved by public safety.
Thank you.
I will make a motion to approve Kristen for the class B beer on-premise license and class C wine on-premise license applicant.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item J, discussion, consideration, and possible approval of the following tobacco license applicants. Sub one, Brian Gottfried, seventy-three twelve Townline Road, doing business as Jerome's Corner Market, West two three zero, South eighty-seven fifteen Clark Street. Chief?
Approved by public safety.
Sub two, Patel Alkesh, South, uh, South ninety-one, West two two five oh.
Oh, missing one.
Yeah, we're missing one.
Two two nine.
Two two nine five oh. Milwaukee Avenue, doing business as Big Ben Food and Beverage, South ninety-one, West two two nine five oh Milwaukee Avenue. Chief?
Approved by public safety.
And sub three, Brad Janney, new agent, thirty-two twenty-five Douglas Avenue, East Troy, doing business as Quick Trip. West two thirty-five, South seventy-one, twenty-five Big Ben Drive. Chief?
Approved by public safety.
I'll go back to Patel. He gave the.
Why is his address the same here as opposed to the other ones?
He wrote on his, probably his application, the premise license, rather than, um.
His personal one?
His personal one, which is required on the liquor license.
Okay.
Got it. I noticed the difference too.
Yep, thanks.
I make a motion to approve the tobacco license for Brian Gottfried, Talakish, and Brad Janney.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item K, discussion, consideration, and approval of change of agent for Quick Trip Village of Big Ben, Brad Janney.
New manager, approved by public safety.
I make motion to approve the change of agent for Quick Trip.
I'll second your motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item eight, correspondence. Lot of it, right. Um, hopefully we get through pretty quickly. We got a very letter here from Weed Energies. Uh, they wanna know if we have any construction planned in the village this year, what, what they can plan for. Um, I'm gonna ask the clerk to forward this on to Eric. Um, and he can get with them. They need nobody into July for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two projects. Um, economic profile, we have the Waukesha County Center for Growth, economic profiles for the village. They'll be available upfront for the public consumption. Get those out, I think, by, I believe.
Um, Judy is looking to attend next month's board meeting, by the way.
Excellent.
To come do a face-to-face meet and greet. She's the one that took over for Tim Casey.
Very good. Look forward to meeting her. Uh, item C, Village Vernon, Village Vernon Public Notice, please take note that the Village of Vernon will be hosting a public hearing on May twelfth, twenty-twenty-one at seven PM at the Vernon, Vernon Village Hall. We all know where that's located. To amend the Village of Vernon zoning map to include shoreland zoning and to create consistency on a certain, on certain individual parcels and to create the Village of Vernon Shoreland Zoning Overlay District with Chapter three hundred and to create the Village of Vernon Shoreland-dash-Wetland zoning ordinance and to amend the Village of Vernon floodplain ordinance. Full text video ordinances and proposed changes are available by getting in touch with the clerk in the Village of Vernon. Uh, we got a letter from AT&T. We got a whole bunch of stuff here. They're assigning their video franchise certificate to DirecTV LLC from AT&T, and that's what this one is about. It's got the list of contacts for DirecTV LLC. And the other ones, yeah, this was a UPS notice and this was just a copy of it for the clerk. We received a thank you card, if anybody wants to read it, from John Kopecchi's sister for the Parthenflour's first funeral. I don't know if you wanna pass it around. This was missing on here. Uh, we received a re- request for service of current kids. And I'll read this quickly. Um, Big Ben is not attracting anyone to the village by allowing obscenities to fly along one sixty-four. The F Biden flag is unacceptable for a civil society. The houses along one sixty-four fly and post their opinions for all, including children going to and from school to view. I think that the residents of Big Ben and the travelers through the village deserve a kinder, more civil view. I think that the residents of Big Ben and the travelers through the village deserve a kinder, more civil view. She requests that such signage and flags be removed from public view." Um, I'm not gonna state her name. "As I've told every person that's called me on the phone, there is literally nothing we can do to stop this." Um, it is against the First Amendment and against the law to limit or to regulate content of signs and flags, no matter how tasteless and how classless they look."
That applies to businesses also?
Yeah.
Not a business.
Uh, as as I've read, uh, if it becomes a public disturbance, meaning if you were to get a handful of people or so out there to protest peacefully, um, the police department could write up a report on that saying that there was a public disturbance out there, people were protesting. Uh, and then at that point, if that became a regular occurrence, we could do something then. But that's, I believe, the only way we can do anything, is if it comes to public nuisance.
Yeah, I mean, that's essentially correct, the unless it gets to be what we call obscene or poising, uh, the slang, the aguerriti in the South hasn't reached the limit where we can stop it. I, I, if it's a commercial site and there are certain sign limitations or replacement limitations, I guess we could look at, at that. Um, but, um, and do you need to look into right-of-way at all if any?
I don't know. Yeah, I don't know where that flag pole is located in respect to the right-of-way.
If it, that flag pole is further in to the property than the out, outer edge of Mobo's mobile sign. So I'm guessing, did I look, did I check that? So I'm guessing it's not in the right-of-way, because if it is, that would be Mobo'd at the other
Right.
sign too, so I'm guessing they're both within
Right.
compliance.
And there's no ordinance that hopeful this flag pole can be to your like, property line, because it's like sitting right on top of Mobo.
That I'm not sure of.
I don't think there's a setback for a flag pole.
I've never seen anything like that.
Well, I don't know, can we look?
Okay, I'll ask Mary, but...
Yeah, I don't think so.
Like, unfortunately, I think, you know...
Might as well try it.
The, the way I read everything online about these unfortunate flags out there, and that is that um, the F-word is protected by First Amendment rights where the actual act is not. You know, so if it was a visual representation, we have every right to enforce, because that's considered vulgar. This is considered slang.
Could it be, could it be a public safety type thing? Because with the amount of traffic coming in, in and out of Big Ben?
You'd have to prove, you'd have to prove there's a bunch of accidents or something caused.
But it, it could be, if they're distracted by looking at the sign, and...
I could win the lottery tonight, too.
Right, no, it, it, we, it's, it's pretty common to drive that it has to be... Unfortunately, there's nothing we can do as a village.
And it's...
I, I, we could force them to take them down, but we would lose a court battle and end up paying not only our attorney to go to court, but theirs as well. And I just think that's throwing bad money.
Right, right.
It's unfortunate that...
That's not in violation of our ordinance related to election material?
They're, they're not election signs.
No, it's not elect.
Doesn't say, it's a personal opinion sign.
We could walk there right now and go knock on the door and ask kindly to take it down.
Tried that.
Yeah. So, I'm gonna move along off of that, because we all know where we're at. I got a letter from FEMA. How come everything's in duplicate? Confusing to hear. Um, based on the, uh, flood insurance rate map and flood insurance study that we submitted to them a year and a half ago, um, obviously flood plane maps and all of that is a little beyond my pay grade. I forwarded it on to Will Hind, who helped me work on it originally and set it up. Um, he found a couple of minor discrepancies that he's addressing through the DNR first. I don't think we're gonna get them included on this map, because it's too late. Um, Ripple Brook, and then, uh, what's the one over by Jeff's house? There's another Brook that runs through there, that were not listed. But they were studied and identified, and the DNR recognizes them. So he's working on, between him and Naomi, figuring out how to address this best and get them re-recorded further.
Sounds good. Got the most correspondence I've seen yet.
Yeah, I know. Um, with that, we will move along to item number nine. When Jeff gets back. Let's do a roll call vote, I can start reading now. I'm gonna go into closed session, as per Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub B E. Considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation of any public employee over which the governing body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility and negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive with bargaining reasons, require a closed session, specifically personnel slash employee issues. Um, it will require a roll call vote and a motion.
What motion you want in closed session?
Second.
Any further discussion? Trustee Howdy Show?
Aye.
Trustee Clark?
Aye.
Trustee Bennett?
Aye.
Trustee Visaki?
Aye.
Trustee Goodman?
Aye.
Trustee Con?
Aye.
And Trustee Long?
Aye.
And I'm going to excuse the clerk at this time, because there's no mess taken here, and I doubt that they're opening it after public comments afterwards. And she's been here an awful long time this week. She's done a fine job.
Yeah.